All right. Good morning. Welcome to the meeting of the Oaklous County Board of Commissioners, Tuesday, January seventh at eight thirty a.m. We'll begin this morning with an invocation by Senior Pastor, the Reverend Jesse Jernigan from Milligan Assembly of God, and then the Pledge of Allegiance led by our local Scouts, Boy Scouts of America. So if you would, please stand with us.
First of all, I want to say thank you so much, Chairman, for the opportunity to be here this morning and Commissioners, the first meeting of this brand new year, 2025. It's an honor. And as wonderful as maybe our words may be, I feel like God's eternal word is more important. So I want to read a couple scriptures over this body and over this county before I pray. Psalm, Chapter two, verses ten and eleven says, "Now therefore be wise, O kings; be instructed rulers of the earth; serve the Lord with fear, and rejoice with trembling." Micah six eight says, "He has told you, O man, what is good; and what does the Lord require of you but to do justice, lovekindness, and walk humbly with the Lord your God?" If you would, bow your heads. Let's pray. Father, I thank you for this opportunity, Lord, that we have to come together to serve this great county. Lord, I thank you for your blessings. I thank you for unity, Lord, among this this body and among this county, Lord. And I just speak that unity over this place, over all businesses conducted, Lord. I pray that it is led with wisdom. I pray that discernment comes to our hearts, and when we make decisions, we will do that with justice in mind and the benefit of the county. I pray, Lord, through this county, Lord, not only in this room, but all throughout everything that it pertains to, Lord, that righteous leaderships and leaders that are wise, they would rise. Corrupt leaders would be removed. I pray, Lord, that clarity, insight, and strength would come. Discernment, justice would come. That leading with compassion and empathy would be the talk of the day. I pray for each one that's here for protection and safety, not only in this room, but over their families. I pray for health and blessing over them and their families. I pray, Lord, for humility and integrity. I pray, Lord, for economic stewardship in every area of this county. And Lord, I pray specifically that the the thing that would mark this place, this county, would be humility and gratitude. I pray for your strength. I pray for your blessing over this session and all those that follow. And Lord, we give you honor, and we give you praise. In the mighty name of Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor, and thank you to the local scouts. The scoutmaster for Troop five thirty-two in Holt is William James, who works with our parks and facilities. And so what a great opportunity for these young men to come and participate. We'll begin this morning, next item, with a PIO update. Mr. Tomaczek?
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners, and Nick Tomaczek, your PIO for Oaklousa County. We have a high little highlight reel that Mr. Vincent put together to show you what the PIO office has been doing the past several or more months. I had a few brief remarks and a couple of slides. So we are at our core, our mission is to inform accurately and in a timely manner. We also want to inform the public about what our departments are doing, and in doing so, support those departments. So a lot of what we do is in conjunction with the with direct dramatics and in public safety issues. But we also want to let folks know about the other things that you may not know what's going on in the public. So airports, these are just a few little snippets of things that we've done in the past five or six months or so. Some items of note, so we continue some ongoing things to inform the public about is the voter-approved infrastructure Certax that has exceeded expectations and allowed us to provide the infrastructure needs that the county expects of us, the North Oaklousa Planning Study. That was one example where you saw the community, while it was a little rocky at the start, they came out and became informed and became a part of their community in doing so. And I thought it was a great example of that, of the community getting involved, because in the PIO world, we want more of that from our public. Another thing is to reduce contamination in our curbside recycling bins. Kaylee Hymer has been doing an incredible job with Keep Oaklousa Beautiful. We're going to continue our efforts with that. In addition, you know, I came from a digital background in the newspaper industry, but we've been doing a lot of print publications. So our annual report, County Calendar, and then the website redesign was a great collaboration with our IT department. We're really proud of those things. So one thing I did want to spend a little bit of time on, the excitement, the passion, the interest that has surrounded the SS United States is remarkable. You'll look on the slide here. I pulled a dad, I pulled a report from October first to December seventeenth. National TV audience, over four million, almost five million, a total online print audience. You could look at those numbers, and it's incredible. And it's not just the United States. Obviously, Philadelphia media is very interested in it. Media mentions outside of the United States, United Kingdom. I'm getting media inquiries from England. We have headlines in Argentina, Greece, China, Costa Rica, Canada, and Brazil. And, you know, I've had more than 1,000 interactions with the media and members of the public, members of people interested and passionate about this vessel over the over the past month. So I wanted to make you guys aware of that. It's a it is definitely expanded Oaklousa's name and the and the brand that Jennifer and her team have been working to to expand with zero dollars involved in that. So before we run the highlight reel that Ed had, does anybody have any questions or anything? All right, go ahead, Ed.
Thanks for your time, you guys. And I wanted to say one final note. There are some leftover 2025 calendars over there if anybody would like to grab one. So thank you.
Great job. Thank you. Great work. Thank you. Vice Chair Ketchel, will you introduce the next item?
So it'll be my privilege, and I'm asking Dan Sanbenedetto to come to the mic while I introduce this. Several years ago, I was talking with Mr. Autry. One of the things that we get the most concerns and complaints about are roads. And I said out loud to Mr. Autry, you know, we really need an app or something where people, citizens, constituents can go to their roads, click on it, and just say, oh, this road is run by the county, or this road is run by Florida Department of Transportation, or this is a state road. And Jason Autry said to me, you know, we should talk to IT. So I called Dan Sanbenedetto, who's head of our IT department, and he said, this is a great idea. And so they've worked for months putting this together, and today we're going to unveil it. And I'm so excited about it that honestly, if approved this morning, I really think we should take this to the Florida Association of Counties, because all sixty-seven counties need this. And some, it's just one of those ideas that we finally have the time and the so this is one of those things where you can click on the road. It's all color-coded. You can find out if it's in a municipality. And let me just give you an example. Hollywood is a nightmare. So Hollywood's in the South End. You don't know whether it's in the county, because it is in the county at some points. It's also in the city of Fort Walton. It's also in the city of Mariester. So it's this will clear that up completely, and then you can report it to the appropriate person. So with that, I'm just going to turn it over to you because you can show something. You can show them how beautiful this is. And the work that you have all have put into it, I am so grateful to your team and for Eddie Quinnland.
Well, thank you for your kind words. When Commissioner Ketchel came to us and, you know, from a recommendation from Jason, we 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 looked at kind of our options, what we could do, and we could build a little and what we do in GIS a lot is we build little, you know, targeted tools that meet certain needs that, you know, that people come to us and say, hey, we have a problem. We'd like you to solve it. So this was a little problem that we wanted to solve. And could you just back up on that a little bit?
So what we did is we took existing GIS data that we had in Public Works, OMS, and we merged it with other existing GIS data that we had throughout the county, either from municipalities or data that we maintained already. And so a lot of the source data that we already had, we already had, but we just had to package it up and put it into a little web tool. And that's what we did. So we created this little web tool, and Eddie Quinnland, our GIS
So we created this little web tool and Eddie Quinnlin, our GIS manager, did a great job pulling this all together and working with Commissioner Ketchel to try to come up a little front end interface that would be usable to the public. And so I put together a little video here. Now just be advised, the production value on my video is not anything close to the production value on next video. But if you go to our, if you go to the county website and go to the GIS portal page, you click on the, the road management tool and it comes up with this little front end and you can type in your address. And for an example, that I just put in two, 251 Sweetwater Run, Niceville. It zooms to the address, it selects the roads around that address. And then on the right hand side, you can select the road that you actually want to, to, to view and determine the ownership or the maintenance of. And it'll tell you that particular road is the city of Niceville, it tells you who to contact, it gives you a phone number and the agency link takes you to their county, to their city website. And then if you wanted to zoom out and say you wanted to see Harton Drive, notice that management is by the state. It gives you contact information and a link, and so you can go to that organization if you have additional questions. But say while you're in the map, you wanted to zoom around a little bit more and look at some other roads. And if you notice there's some roads coming up on Ruckel Drive, that management is from the county. Gives you a contact information, Road Division's chief, county website, link and a, and a phone number to call. And so it's just a quick little tool where the public can go in and zoom in and zoom out, type in addresses and then quickly determine the ownership and the maintenance of a road. And if you notice, we put that road management information tool on our Okaloosa County GIS portal with many other tools that we have on there. We have, you know, parks tours, we have county flood insurance zones, we have artificial reefs, we have lots of different other tools on there. Women's Veterans Memorial Map. And so this would be a great addition and it was a great idea. It's data that we've had in the, in the, internally for years, but we just didn't package it up. We didn't have the idea to package it up and make it available to the, to the public in an easy to use interface that answers a lot of questions that I know the commissioners get a lot. You know, who owns this road, who maintains this road? And so now you can point them to this tool if you, if you desire and they can look it up using the, you know, the internet. So thank you Commissioner Ketchel for your idea and I appreciate our team, you know, implementing it in a, in an effective way.
Well, and I, may I, Chairman, and I appreciate the hours that you've put into this. I will say that I'm very proud of our county roads in the best shape they've ever been in because of the certex. And we get a lot of complaints though, like for instance, Shalimar, that's my district. And so a lot of people say, you know, 85 going, you know, by the Shalimar Post Office, cross the bridge, the bridge is in terrible shape, do something, you're the commissioner. Well, that's run by Florida Department of Transportation and now you'll be able to just see that and then register your complaint with the appropriate. So I guess we don't need to vote on it because it's live, so I'm very thrilled about this.
But I will say, as the citizens or the residents use this tool, if they find errors or omissions in the help tab, there's a, some contact information, please notify us. Because it'll be a work in progress anytime we maintain that, maintain this kind of GIS data. There's always a scrubbing that we need to go through and a, you know, a QA QC to make sure that it's as accurate as possible. So if anybody finds any errors, please let us know and we'll fix them.
Well, thank you, Mr. Sanbenedetto, and also please thank Eddie Quinnlin, who spent countless months working on this.
Yes, he did all the work, so I have to give him all the credit.
I wish he was here today, thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Mr. Hosted, county administrators update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, just very briefly, I wanted to remind the board that our next meeting in January follows the Martin Luther King holiday. So that'll be an afternoon meeting starting at 1:30, that's the January 21st meeting. And with that, that's all I have.
Ms. Hoshihara, county attorneys update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I have no updates, but want to wish everyone a happy new year.
Mr. Clerk.
Well, in the words of my predecessor, I'm, I'm just happy to be here. I'm looking forward to working with each and every one of y'all, looking forward to serving the county in this new role. And thank you all so much for the hospitality this morning.
He's in the room, you better use his words. So this morning, we're going to take appropriate time and attribute it in, in honor to JD Peacock. Seldom has your full name been used in this room and thankfully it's not this morning, so we will, uh, I was too. So a few things about JD, four years in the Army, 25 years with the Okaloosa County Sheriff's Office, some of that dealing with young ignorant deputies in pursuit of careers that thought they had the world in their hands when they first put on that uniform. And they had your example to follow, to be able to learn, especially as you went through the ranks and, and made it to, to the top of that and before you chose to come in to Okaloosa County Clerk of Court. So in 2019 through 22, you're the chairman of the Clerk of Courts Operations Corporation. 2020 Clerk of the Year by Florida Court Clerks and Comptrollers Association. And then in 2021 Northwest Florida State College Foundation Chairman's Award. It's not necessary to read those things, but if people don't know you, I wanted to make mention of those because it speaks to the caliber of who you are. Because it mentions some of what you've done. And it's been an honor to serve with you, both in your career in the sheriff's office and in your career here with, with the county as a clerk. And it's going to be exciting to see what you and Ms. Laura choose to do in your adventures in retirement and how long you stay in retirement. And then it'll be exciting just to, just to follow, to see if there's a, a next career wise or if Ms. Laura, you're going to succeed and make him stay at home. And so it'll be great to, to watch this and, and hopefully enjoy some of it with you. But I just on behalf of our board, wanted to say how appreciative we are of the service that you've done and who you are in our county and in our community. So thank you JD. We have a couple of items that we'd like to give you. One is this is your very own. And then a plaque that will present you with this. Well, we would like to take a picture with you, please share a few things.
Thank you, I, I appreciate it. I, I, watching this morning's presentation, it truly shows how far we've come in the 10 years that I've been with the team at the, at the Clerk's Office and really part of the team for the county. I've tried to make sure we've got a close working relationship or partnership with the county and the department heads. And we really have come a long way. We are the jewel of the Emerald Coast of the Panhandle. When you look at how governments work to the left of us and to the right of us. And that's you on the dais, that is our staff and our employees who do the work every day. And it's exampled every time Nick gets up and does a, a presentation, you see what happens across our county. I certainly want to leave thanking the team that has surrounded me. Because certainly it was not me, I, I tell everybody, if I was, if I'm the smartest guy in the room, we got problems. The team that I've had is who has made the Clerk's Office and will continue on serving our community. I, of course, want to thank my wife, who has been behind, beside me for the whole time. And, and like you mentioned about when the young deputy that started years ago, there's a gentleman in the room, Hank Barry back there, that was my training officer back when I started the sheriff's office and when I was that young, hard-headed, hard-charging deputy sheriff wanting to save the world. And thank you, Hank. And of course, there's lots of people in the room and not in the room that have, that have made me. I, I will go on to hopefully continue to influence the, the county and watching closely. And you will not see me go away into the sunset, I will be around doing things and representing all sports and my church and you name it, I'm going to probably be involved in it. I'm always available for, for anything that I can do to help you, any of that knowledge that I may have stuffed in my head that I've learned from everybody. But thank you very much. You've got a great man and a great team coming in to continue the tradition at the Clerk's Office. So thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
TD Peacock and I ran together and that was when we really connected. We did connect through church, our faith community before, of course, he's Methodist and I'm Catholic, but also he's very involved, that's right. He's very involved in the Sons of the American Revolution, I'm very involved in the Daughters. And so we, we've worked together on many projects, cleaning cemeteries and restoring tombstones. And so I'm really going to miss the friendship here, but since you're in Shalimar, I'll be seeing a lot of you, so thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, thank you.
The way we'll do our picture is if the two of you would come up here.
Okay.
We'll just stand behind the dais and have that.
Yes, sir.
Thanks. This time we'll have public comment, have three speaker cards. Remember you will have three minutes to talk about any item you choose. Please remember to stay professional and appropriate with your speech. Ms. Kim Doe, we'll begin with you. Would you please come to the microphone? The orphan parcel item is not a public hearing and so now is the time for all public comment.
Good morning Commissioners, thank you so much for having me. Here, I, I am a land developer and developer of affordable workforce housing. In my volunteer hats, I'm also a member of the Downtown Action Committee for West Palm Beach, which is equivalent of planning and zoning for downtown West Palm Beach. And I'm also on the Housing Leadership Council for Palm Beach County. So I'm a serious learner of housing land use issues. And on the orphan parcels, I am here to, I'm speaking to support the conceptual plan with the addition of, I strongly request that you would modify it to increase the density and the increase, the net use substantially. I know the plan is in place for the next 20 years. And this, I, a lot of the public newspaper have heralded as the generational opportunity. And to make the most of this generational opportunity, I strongly recommend that the density and that uses be substantially increased, not just incrementally, but multiple, even potentially exponentially. The current plan, the current plan calls for about a little over 2,000 units. And out of all the acreage, hundreds of acreage that we have in these parcels, there's at least 10 more times that, that should be built. For example, one of the applications that will be, that, that the funding that will be available under Florida Finance Housing Finance Authority would be for a significant development of regional impact. And, and that, just that one application alone requires 300 affordable units for each application. And one of the project that already approved last year under that category in Orlando, Universal gave only 20 acres to a developer and out of that 20 acres, they're able to do 1,000 units, including 300 affordable. And not only housing, but educational. Jeff Bezos Academy free kindergarten for, for young children and other amenities that they're only able to do because of the high density within 20 acres. We have, we have so many acres here and out of all the parcels. So please consider to substantially increase the density. Thank you so much.
Kevin Bishop.
Good morning, my name is Kevin Bishop of 4232 Whipperwell Drive in Holt, Florida. I'm here to speak about an issue that I've been having with Holt Water District. I won't read the complete complaint, I don't think we have enough time this morning for that, but I'll give you some brief background and history. Earlier this month, I contacted the Public Service Commissioner of the State of Florida about this issue. And they contacted me and said that Holt Water was not under their regulations due to it being a nonprofit organization and advised me that it was under the sole regulation of the Okaloosa County Board of County Commissioners and advised me to contact you guys about this issue. So I bought my place in 2016 and at that time, I contacted Holt Water District to find out the location of my water meter. And I was advised it was on the corner of Log Lake and Whipperwill and that I would be responsible for all the water pipe for about a third of a mile from Log Lake Road to my house. And advised that they did not supply water mains down privately owned roads and that that was my only option was to either leave my water meter at Log Lake or to install a private well. At the time, I found that there was water mains already on Whipperwill Drive. If you're familiar, Whipperwill is a loop and where it comes off Canoe Lake Road, there's a water main with fire hydrants about two thirds of the way down the road, which ends about 3,000 feet from my property. I asked Donna Ash at Holt Water if she could give me some kind of direction on how I could have that water main extended to my property since it was already across private property and the utilities easement. She advised me to contact Patrick Broxton, who works for Holt Water. He advised me in his exact words, Donald Trump doesn't have enough money for me to run water pipe down that damn road. At that time, I dropped the issue. Until just this past summer, one of my neighbors bought some property, two parcels down from me. And about a month later, there was a water main installed and a water meter in his front lawn. I contacted the board at Holt Water and asked them, hey, the president said if you can extend the water main there, can you extend it to my property as well? They was told, they told me that, A, that there was no water main extended, there was no water meter in this person's front yard, which it is. It's Christian Valerie Hoyt's property on Whipperwill. They said that Patrick Broxton was paid privately $6,000 to extend the water, the water line that the meter was at the main and it was a private water line installed, which it's not. It's a one inch water extension off the main to his, to their property with a meter in their front yard. And I have a copy of the letter that I, the complete letter that I sent to the Public Service Commission. I'm just asking you guys for some advice and some guidance on what to do next.
Sure, Mr. Bishop, give us just a moment. Ms. Cox, Commissioner Cox, this is in your district, as you know. My suggestion would be that, that we allow Ms. Hoshihara to go over the paperwork and then get back with you. And if it's an item that needs to come back to this commission, then we can discuss it.
So the, the advice, just, just so I understand correctly and we all understand correctly, the, the advice that is being dispensed is that we allow our legal team to look at it, I mean, our, our legal counselor to look at it and decide what the best action is to move forward so that we can process this and get the ball rolling for you. Do I understand that correctly?
Yes, Ms. Hoshihara can follow up with them.
Is that acceptable to you, sir?
Yes, that's fine and no contact directly to me.
Yeah, we'll take your paperwork.
Okay.
Sure, is this a copy? Okay, thank you. It's on the, you put the correct phone number on your speaker card?
Yes.
Okay.
The, it's a Mississippi area code, yes, except for, all right, thank you.
Cedric Peterson.
Good to see you. Good morning Chairman, good morning Councilmen, Commissioners. I do just want you to approve the, what's on the consent agenda for the maker, our Dorcas Fire District. It's the question I have is, is what is our goal, future goal of that fire protection for the Dorcas community?
Yes, sir. So the future goal is to ensure that there is fire coverage. As you know and have stayed very close to, it's a, a situation that As you know, and have stayed very close to, it's a situation that, that was given to us. And so with it being given to us, Mr. Maddox is doing a tremendous job of getting coverage immediately and then creating the plan for what the future will entail. And that will definitely come back before this commission, before anything is, is formalized or final. Sure. And your name has been used multiple times to be able to help us in that process, not just because of where you live, but because of the career that you did so successfully, you and Mr. Barry. So glad you're both here.
Thank you for that.
Yes, sir. So, so right now there's nothing to express as far as future plans, other than providing excellent fire coverage, but there are things that have to change in the future. And as that is addressed, you'll definitely be a part of that.
Yes, sir. I was just hoping that, you know, there's some timeframes as far as when meetings to occur in relation to that, because I know we're already six months into this. This like, this actually started back in January of last year. And y'all was handed it back to it because that's where it originated from to start with. The history there is Chief Doc Brandon is a keyhole to all the districts that are formed in Northland County. And he started first with North Ocalusa. That's where it started with. I just happened to be there at the time with that department and served underneath him. So I know a lot of history that's related in all these districts that was formed there. So, but I do appreciate that very well through the immediate action that was done. But I know everything is like a six month window there. Cause I know they're still building out there and it'd be good if we could have full time people step out of those stations to provide that need for our service there.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
If it's okay with you, I'll pass your information on to Mr. Maddox. And as we have future meetings, we'll, we'll bring you to them.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you again, boy.
Commissioners will move to the consent agenda. Ms. Hoshahara?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would request that number five be pulled. There's an additional change that was requested after the agenda was published. And I'm happy to go over that at the appropriate time.
Thank you.
Motion for approval minus five.
Thank you, Commissioner Ketchel.
I'll say it.
Thank you, Commissioner Palmer. A motion and a second for the consent agenda minus item five. Any further discussion? All in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Ms. Hoshahara, if you'll address number five.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Consent agenda number five is regarding a resolution on the Ocalusa County Commission on the Status of Women. The initial change was to replace one of the entities of which we would get a member from. The American Business Women's Association is no longer in existence. And so to replace them with 100 Women Who Care of Emerald Coast. However, after the agenda was published, we received an additional request, which is, and you all have hard copies before you, subsection D would, would also, in subsection C, it allows anyone who's part of the state organization who resides in Ocalusa to serve as a non-voting ex officio member of the Commission on, the county's Commission on the Status of Women. The proposed subsection D would give the same authority to anyone who is a representative of the national organization, who resides in Ocalusa would also be a non-voting ex officio member of the county organization. So with that change, we would request that the board consider approval of this resolution as presented.
Thank you. Commissioners?
Chairman, I don't see any problem with this. I'll motion for approval and clarify that the 100 Women Who Care are not an additional 100 women. That's the name of the organization.
That'd be a big committee. Is there a second?
I'll say it.
Thank you. A motion by Commissioner Ketchel, a second by Commissioner Palmer. Any further discussion? All in favor signify with aye. Any opposed? That passes unanimously. We have one public hearing on today's agenda to consider a request to vacate a portion of Seventh Avenue and Port Dixie subdivision in Shalamar. Mr. Autry, will you present?
Good morning, Jason Autry, Public Works. There is one public hearing for consideration today. This came up as a request for the parcel to the north side when they were looking to vacate property that was on the east, right away that was on the east and the south. Because of the location between their parcel and the existing sheriff's office headquarters, we had some concerns related to historical parking that was out there. You can see on the aerial that, that this area is heavily utilized for parking by visitors and staff to the sheriff's office. And talking with the applicant, their agent, Mr. Siner, who is here as well, we had come to an agreement that perhaps the best thing to do is to actually close this segment of roadway off so that it could be improved for purposes related to the sheriff's headquarters, cut through on some, or cut down on the cut through traffic because you have an issues where there are, there are vehicles backing out into an active roadway and still being able to afford the adjacent property, their request to vacate the property that's on there. We did separate this request from the original request. The reason being is that their county is becoming the greater acquisition of the property. Commissioner Goodwin brought up a very good point the last time this discussed and that in order to vacate right away, we have to split it in half, which we are doing by resolution. And then the applicant, the property of the north has given a quick claim deed to the county that gives the county the southern basically 80 foot of the right of way. They will retain the northern 20 foot of the original 100 foot right of way. In your applicant, in the packet that's inside of here, the documents are blank. I do want to let you know that I have given the clerk of court, the executed documents. Unfortunately, the timing of this was such that we had to put in the template, but the executed documents are in hand with the clerk's office. And we do recommend this approval moving forward. If this is done, what it will allow is the property of the north to develop as they have requested, it allows them to utilize this area for a little bit of increase in floor area ratio. And then what we will do is Public Works will work with the county administrator's office and also the sheriff's office on ways that we can improve this, this little area for additional parking and probably even stormwater facilities out there at the sheriff's office headquarters. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions if you'd have them.
Seeing none, we'll open for public comment. I have no speaker cards requesting to speak. Is there anyone from the public that desires to speak to this issue? Seeing none, this time we'll close the public hearing. Commissioners?
Chairman, this is my district, so I'll motion for approval. Thank you for your work on this, Mr. Autry. And you and I did make a site visit. This is a good thing.
Yep.
And I'll be happy to second Mr. Chairman. And I just want to say, you know, thanks to Jason, his team and the applicant, you know, for working, working through this and, and, and kind of getting to where it needs to be. I think it makes a lot of sense and we'll address the, the needs of the sheriff's office at the same time, helping, helping the property owner make best use of their land. So good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. All in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Moving to department business. Mr. Coffey.
Hey, good morning, Commissioners. It's a pleasure to be for you today. And it's also a pleasure to introduce a new department head that we're proposing for your confirmation, Mr. Jeff Peters. Mr. Peters comes to us from the city of Fort Walton Beach, where he has served as city manager for approximately last two and a half years. There he supervised 320 employees, seven departments, quite a big operation, multipurpose operations. Prior to that, he was 17 years old, he was the city's recreation director, which is not just recreation, it's libraries, cemeteries, it's a bunch of other stuff as well. So he has a master's degree in sports administration, recreation, excuse me. But he comes to us with a wealth of knowledge, grew up here. And so it's exciting to welcome him to our team of qualified directors and, and we got a great team. We're building down at, at facilities and parks. Amanda is going to be there with us and we've got a leadership team that's like stacking a wedding cake, I'll say, as far as great people that are working down there. So we're going to do a lot of great things. We're already doing a lot of great things and we're excited about it. And I asked for your support today to confirm.
Thank you, Mr. Coffey. Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Goodwin?
Yeah, if it's acceptable, I'd be happy to make a motion to approve Mr. Peters as the, as the new director and withhold comment if we have a sec, until we have a second.
Yes, sir. Second by Commissioner Cox.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I just, I wanted to take the opportunity to, to just make a brief comment about, about Mr. Peters, about Jeff. I'm excited that, that he's coming on board. I've had the opportunity to work with Jeff in the past. In fact, you know, show my age, more than a decade ago, back in the day when I was on Fort Walton Beach City Council, Jeff was the Parks and Recreation Director there with the city. And we had the opportunity to work together quite a bit. And in fact, some of you may be familiar with the city of Fort Walton's concept that they started with centralizing some of their recreation facilities and really spending some money, time and effort, kind of honing in on the Preston Hood complex and the Hedrick Center and making that a, a real destination for, for locals and for, for things like travel ball and things like that. And it's really become a very good concept. It's proved out. But, you know, I was there when that started. I wasn't there when it got really kicked off, but I'll, I'll never forget, Jeff was, was really working this, this idea. And, and I, I was a little hesitant because it was spending money and, you know, I, I, you know, ma- maybe I'm cheap when it comes to spending public dollars. I'm real, you know, real hesitant, but I said, Jeff, let's take a day, you convince me. And if you can convince me, we'll do it. Well, Jeff got his city truck, picked me up, we drove around for a day. We visited every, every facility, every park that the city of Fort Walton had. We walked through it, looked at all the, looked at the good, the bad, the ugly, and kind of talked through the situation and, and, and he sold me on it. And since then, it's really proved to be a big benefit for the city. So I, I appreciate his, you know, his, his thinking, his efforts. And I know that he'll bring that to the county and, 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 you know, he knows our community. Jeff's, Jeff grew up here. So I think he's going to be a great addition. I, I appreciate it. Fun fact, Jeff's mother was my sixth grade social studies teacher. So, you know, so don't believe what she tells you about me. I wasn't that bad.
Yes, Commissioner Ketchel.
So I too want to just chime in here because I'm older than Trey. Commissioner Goodwin, I've known Mr. Peters since he coached my children, who are now Mr. Goodwin's age. So we go back a long ways. I can't tell you how much I admire you and how thrilled I am to have you. Amanda, you've done a fabulous job and I understand you're getting a promotion, if you don't know that. But I hate, hate to be the one to tell you, but you've done such a wonderful job and I thank you for the interim work that you've done. It's been a pleasure to work with you. I know that Mr. Peters will make a huge difference. And I sure wish Commissioner Boils was still here because about three or four years ago, I brought up the idea of pickleball courts. And Commissioner Boyle said, what's a pickleball? And look what you've done. I mean, you've got 20 covered courts down there and I hope we can replicate some of that in the county. So thank you so much for becoming part of Ocalusa team. We're so happy to have you aboard and I can't say it enough. Thank you.
Commissioner Cox?
I wanted to just give a brief background on Jeff that, although I will always advocate, advocate for Jeff Peters, I have known Jeff and his family from Kenwood, Pryor and Shock Doll. I mean, since I was a little girl, this man has gone just two years before me, all the way through school and been an example every step of the way. So I'm really looking forward to bringing him on board and congratulate you on your new job.
Well, since the article went out ahead of confirmation, I, I was really hopeful nothing crazy came out over the weekend and you made it. So excited that, that, that time has come, Coach. So it would be great to, to see the things that, that come out of, of having you as a part of the team here in Oakley County. With that, all in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So it passes unanimously. Next item of department business, Jennifer Adams, tourist development.
Morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, Happy New Year. I'm Jennifer Adams with the tourist development and I have one exciting item today. Finally, after many years, I'm asking approval for an interlocal agreement with the city of Destin for the Destin Connector. It's been a minute getting here, but we're here now today. The cost that we have, will not exceed 3.3 million. It's been in our capital plan for five years and approved, I think, six years ago for funding. Mr. Cozad's here from Destin if you have any questions, but I'm excited to move forward. As you know, we greatly need this extension for us trying to get home at night and traverse around in the, in the busy month. So today I'm requesting approval for this interlocal with the city of Destin for the Destin Connector.
April of 2013 was a long time ago. Commissioners?
I will move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Palmer and a second by Commissioner Cox. Any further discussion? All in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously.
Thank you so much.
Ms. Fitzgerald?
Good morning, Commissioners. The item that I am presenting for the board's consideration today is acceptance of the Eglin Orphan Parcels Master Plan. Each of you have been provided a copy of the plan report and a summary of the master plan in slide format is included in your agenda package. This plan and other project deliverables is a result of a six month planning process, which was initiated in June, following the board's approval of a contract with Jacobs Engineering to develop the master plan. Of the 10 Eglin orphan parcels currently being evaluated for development, this plan focused on eight of those parcels. The planning process, which included stakeholders throughout the community, addresses the need for attainable housing, commercial development and recreational and civic spaces. Faces of the planning process included a technical analysis, parcel analysis, site visits, a vulnerability and risk assessment, a high level market analysis and additional stakeholder roundtables. This master plan will be utilized by the county, its community partners in Eglin to advance efforts related to the orphan parcels, specifically moving them from their current status as orphan parcels to whatever mechanism will allow them to be developed, whether that's through the EUL process or other processes to be identified. And I'll just, one comment that I would like to add in, in response to Ms. Doe's comments is to just specify with regards to the number of housing units and the density of those housing units. Part of, part of the planning process was a market analysis to see what the number of housing units that could be supported by our market based on plans, such as the attainable housing strategic plan, the different Eglin housing assessments, as well as evaluating the number of proposed developments currently in play. And to the extent that the master plan for each parcel would consider things such as the existing infrastructure or the surrounding characteristics of whether that was a neighboring residential neighborhood, they were very careful to, to, to try to propose a, a concept that would most likely get support of the community and, and based on the needs of Eglin and the community. And so this is very much a high level conceptual master plan, just because you are seeing a parcel laid out in the manner that it is laid out in the plan, or whether it's showing a commercial development or residential development, that doesn't mean that the, the parcel will ultimately have to be developed specifically like it is shown. It is simply for planning purposes and for moving these parcels through the process. Our consultant is available via Zoom if you have any technical questions that I cannot answer, but I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Thank you for the way that you've explained that as well. I did receive an email from a neighbor of one of the parcels in very concerned over this one coming up instantly, and it's, it's a multiple year project that, that we're not at the end of. And so thank you for your explanation with the high level conceptual plan. This is not a zoning meeting. We're not looking to change any zoning. We're not giving designations today of what will be where. We're just stepping along in this process together. A big question that I've received, and I didn't see any other indicators of, of speaking, and so I'll take this, this liberty, is where does this go from here? And so the next steps is we give this back to Eglin, seeing that, that we have paid for study and we receive it back and, and we take this, this master plan, which is seeing that we have paid for study and we receive it back and we take this master plan, which is an initial phase. And we utilize that within the same agreement that we entered into last year and the year prior with Eglin's leadership, moving us in a direction of what could be. But this would be quite a process. It would have to go back and forth with the military and the county to see what role the county desires to play in that. Every item would come back to this board as we move forward if the county was a partner in this. But this continues the dialogue together. It continues our partnership that we currently have with the military and with the leadership there. And this is never seen before, having an opportunity like this. So we're not limiting ourselves. At the same time, we're not committing ourselves. And so this goes all the way through beyond these discussions to the NDAA process. So this is not something that's finalized with what we do here today. What we're simply doing is accepting the conceptual master plan and then passing it on so that they can use it to the best of their abilities. And we can continue to evaluate our role within this partnership of what that looks like moving forward. So I just wanted to be sure that those questions were answered. Commissioners, Mr. Palmer.
Yeah, I just wanted to kind of double down on that a little bit. So this is needed by the Air Force in order for them to kind of understand what we would propose to do with these parcels. And the way that it was described to me and as this is going to become, you know, getting more publicity, even though it's gotten a lot so far. But as we approve this acceptance of this master plan, conceptual master plan, the way that it was described to me is sort of the start of the conversation, right? This isn't, you know, nobody should get, you know, too worked up about what each parcel says or whatever. These are concepts. These are things that we're using for planning. And we're talking 20 years worth of potential development and further. And with many of the parcels, maybe with all of the parcels, there was portions of it that were left to future development and to green space, open space, all of that sort of stuff as well. So again, this is beginning of the conversation, like I said, not binding in any way on us to, you know, treat or to develop each of these parcels as it's laid out on the plan. So I appreciate the work on this. You know, I enjoyed the 150 pages of light reading over the weekend. So thank you for that. But I mean, I think this is a, I think this is a good thing and this is a generational opportunity for us as well. So thank you.
Is that a motion?
I will motion to, unless, does anybody have?
And I'll second.
Commissioner Cox.
So I understood you to say, and I appreciated you saying that the conceptual plan did not maximize the number of units. In relation to Ms. Doe's question earlier about maximizing the number of units possible in these parcels, I understood you to say that there was careful time and attention put into proposing developments or to make recommendations which are compatible with the existing environments, the residential communities and the citizens who already live there. And I think that that is a measure and a step that is absolutely in the right direction, particularly given the state of current affairs. So I appreciate that and had thumbs up for the good work.
Seeing no additional, all in favor, signify with aye. Sorry, Mr. Palmer?
I'm sorry. I don't think there's been a motion yet, so I'll go ahead and.
Oh, okay. Well, there we go. You're good with that, right?
Yeah, he's not as old as I am, so that's good.
All right. Motion by Commissioner Palmer and a second by Commissioner Ketchell. All in favor, signify with aye. Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Next item is Mr. Camper with growth management.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. As the name of the item suggests, this is actually where kind of two programs that kind of run quietly in the background overlap. But it's important that we do this. The first, basically, as you all know, we participate in the National Flood Insurance Program. And as part of that, we also participate in the community rating system, which is a system established by FEMA that lets them assess how well a county is managing its floodplain regulations. And through that, we get points. The more points we have, the lower our ranking goes, and that's actually a good thing. One is great, 10 is not so good. So we're sitting at a five. We hope to say that to the points that we get through our CRS. Parallel to that, we participate in what's called the local mitigation strategy, which is mandated by the Stafford Emergency Preparedness Act. And what's the local mitigation strategy is, is a comprehensive look at all the various threats the county faces. For us, of course, hurricanes and flooding are two of the big ones, but the LMS has to address everything. So we have tsunamis in there, earthquakes, mudslides, everything. And part of the LMS also says, what are you doing about it? So that includes various programmatic things such as the maintenance of drainage systems that Public Works does, Patrick Maddox's crew and the public outreach they do, the implementation of the building codes and LDC that my department does. These are all things that contribute towards the local mitigation strategy being, how well are we mitigating our vulnerability to these various disasters? Where they overlap is we have to do an annual update to the LMS that shows them where we are in our progress. We also, through our CRS, have to make it publicly available to say, these are our programs. That's what's known as Activity 510. And it's the public outreach regard to floodplain management, which is of course an integral part of our LMS. So we essentially kill two birds with one stone here. And probably the meat of this is, towards the back, you'll see a chart here. And this is all the projects that are currently included in the local mitigation strategy. One of the things they want to know for the LMS update and the CRS is, are there any new projects? Have any projects been taken off because they've been completed or they've just fallen off for whatever reason? In the report you have, the yellow projects are new projects that were added in the past year. And at the very back, you'll see a green bar and under that is the one project that was removed because it was completed. Among the three new projects, Project 1B, which is a Shalimar Drive Drainage Project, that is directly related to floodplain management. So this is the kind of thing that the CRS and the LMS committees want to be out there. This public report has been presented to NIC, so you get the papers, which is a requirement of the CRS and the LMS to receive the points under that program. So really it's sort of a housekeeping matter to make sure that, you know, the program is continuing to function and give an opportunity for the public to be aware of it. And of course, to answer any questions the commissioners may have. Thank you.
A motion for approval. We do this every, how many?
Yeah, you've probably seen this about 12 times now.
Yeah, so, you know, and we don't have, we can't do much about it because FEMA sets the.
Yeah, FEMA sets it. They do all the points through what's their risk, what used to be called ISO. And also, of course, with the LMS, that funding is, the Stafford Act is activated. If we have a declared disaster, funds become available then. And then pretty much annually through what's called the flood mitigation programs, okay? So they control it, but this is what we have to do in order to avail ourselves of those dollars should the need arise.
Thank you.
Chairman, let me make another comment. So we've got a second. So after what we saw happen in Georgia this year and South Carolina, if people don't have flood insurance in addition to regular insurance, they're foolish and certainly where we live.
Mr. Camper, I just want to take the opportunity to thank you for your depth of knowledge in your field because it is vast and the way that you bring about that experience with attention to detail and the opportunity that we have to have you as a resource to be able to help us through all of the processes, growth management. I know that it is an overwhelming task at times, but I really appreciate the work that you're doing.
It's my pleasure, believe me. Thanks, sir.
If a motion and a second, all in favor, signify with aye. Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Mr. Tomelcheck, do we have any additional cards, speakers? Does anyone from the public desire to speak? All right, seeing none, we'll move to the Commissioners Minute. Vice Chair Ketchell, will you begin us with this?
So the reason we look as good as we do, and I'm not going to say as bad as we do sometimes, is because we are very blessed in this county to have a wonderful county administrator. And John Hofstadter is really going to be upset with me for doing this, but we came in together. In his current role, he had already worked five years for the county. But John and I have been together for the last 10 years and he's been here 15 years and I'm not going to let this go unnoticed. So we put together a really nice plaque. He told chairman he couldn't do it, but he didn't tell vice chairman I couldn't do it. So sorry, John, I'm going to recognize you. Just letter of the law. And what this says is John Hofstadter presented to best county administrator ever. Staff didn't like that I put those words there, but I like that because you are in appreciation and recognition for 15 years of dedicated service to the citizens of Okaloosa County, Florida, by the Okaloosa County Board of County Commissioners, January 2025. There's so many things I could say about John, but the thing that I most want to say about him is his honesty. With the Sunshine Law, it's very important that we trust our county administrator. We have to be able to talk with him because we can't talk to each other. And John, I mean, has many amazing qualities that I could go into, but honesty is the one that resonates the most with me. So thank you for all that you've done. I love being a team player with you and if you ever leave, I'm going to resign. That's it.
Mr. Palmer.
So I don't have anything today except for this Happy New Year and I look forward to what 2025 brings. Thank you.
Sir. Commissioner Cox.
I don't have anything specific either, except to say also Happy New Year and thank you for getting us through 2024.
Commissioner Goodwin.
Thank you, Chairman. Just want to wish everyone a happy 2025. And Chairman, you're starting it out right. We're not even to lunchtime and we're wrapping up the meeting. So thank you.
Say that right after the executive session. But thank you. Yes, sir. Yes, 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 yes. Look heavy upon Mr. Maddox for that. So the only thing I have to add is, you know, it seems to be overwhelming that Okaloosa County is at a great position as residents of Okaloosa County and then as seeing the opportunities we have in helping steer the county. We're doing some great things. Each one of the departments are putting forth tremendous effort in being not only team players, but innovative in their fields and moving us to areas that cause our neighbors and people around various parts of the state to look, to wonder what we're doing and how we're accomplishing some of the things. In the past weeks, the new program that we began at the jail for addiction recovery had their first graduation. And that means the people that went through the program went through for a year, whether they were incarcerated or whether they had been released and continued to show up to the off-site location that we've provided. And so for a year, they stayed faithful in that and we were able to celebrate together that they graduated the program. And I can't wait to see what it looks like, to see how that impacts recidivism. But I've had multiple jails around the state ask questions about how that is happening, how we as a commission have allowed that in the jail, being a commission-run jail. Not every jail in the state is commission-run. The majority are under the sheriff and we are not. And so seeing the opportunity we have just from our correction professionals, the opportunity we have from our EMS professionals, take on these issues, opioids, take on these issues that traditionally they were not on the scene to have to deal with. And now, chief, you do. And it becomes something that we can partner in with our health department and we can see these these wonderful innovative ways that we can approach society and see real genuine impact happen, not just around our facilities, but in people's lives so that we can see our citizenship rise to levels that they're capable of, be respected in society and re-enter in a way that is fantastic. You know, one last thing about our jail. I know we'll have a discussion in the future about building a new one. But the staff that we have is doing a tremendous job with what we have given them to work with. And I can't wait to see what takes place in the future with what they're given as we move in the direction of a new facility. So thank you for that. At this time, it concludes the public portion of the meeting. We will go into executive session. It is listed within the agenda to give that idea. Mr. Hofstadter, did you have a venue that you wanted to have this meeting?
We'll use the ante room, the room behind us.
Okay, great. So let's take a five-minute adjournment and then gather there. So let's take a five-minute adjournment and then gather there. So let's take a five-minute adjournment and then gather there.
Are you recording? All right. I'm ready. Meetings adjourned.